Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, December 11, 2025 Regular Governing Board Meeting. It is 6:15, and I call this meeting to order. Ms. Tucker, can you do a roll call?
Thank you. Governing Board Members present, Governing Board President, Mr. Kyle Clayton, Governing Board Vice President, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, and Governing Board Member, Ms. Jenny Abbott-Bearity.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to a moment of silence and meditation. And now, we'll move to the Washington Elementary School District Land Acknowledgement.
Hello. My name is Jamie Brown, and it is my honor to read the WSC land acknowledgement for you all. Washington Elementary School District respectfully acknowledges that our diverse community and schools are located on the ancestral lands of the Atham, Ho-Ha-Kam, Alkemil-Atham, and Atham-Pipash, since time immemorial. WSC is committed to work in partnership with the sovereign Native nations and Indigenous communities to respect and accept responsibility of stewarding their important heritage and culture with our students and our community. Thank you. Aha-ha.
Next, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have an adoption of the December 11, 2025 Regular Meeting Minute Agenda?
I'll make a motion. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the adoption passes. Can I have approval of the November 20, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And can I have an approval for the November 26, 2025 Special and Executive Session Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to Current Events and Acknowledgements. Governing Board Members? Ms. Abbott-Bearity?
Thank you, President Clayton. This is one of my most favorite times of the year because I love going to all the concerts. And one of the things that I love the most is watching the band, choir, and orchestra teachers directing. They have such passion and intensity, and the way that they communicate with the students and lead them, it's truly amazing. I think often of the fact that music teachers in particular have performed at such a high level in their college and all the way through for them, that it's amazing how patient and how much they bring the beauty of the music out of students, even though I know that they hear it maybe differently in their head, but they can bring it out of them. So I love going to those times when we can celebrate them. I was able to attend Alta Vista. Ms. Bendix is a music teacher. There was the third grade choir and fourth through sixth grade recorders. I love hot cross buns. I even heard it in violin this year, which was impressive. I think it's the universal thing that people learn when they're young. I was able to go over to Maryland as well and watch the fifth and sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade orchestra and band led by Elizabeth Corbett and Leo J., the band orchestra teachers. Pala Verdi, I was able to watch Caroline Kappa, the choir director. And then over at Acacia, third grade music with Alyssa Weed. Then I was able to go over to Royal and celebrate. It was called "Dashing Through the Snow" with Ms. Emmy, the orchestra, fourth through eighth grade, and the band, fourth through eighth grade. And finally, over at Royal Palm with Amber Walker. And she was a beginning band, she led the beginning band and orchestra. And then the choir director, teacher was Karina Green, who was over at Manzanita as well. She goes .5 at Royal Palm and then also at Manzanita. And she was a brand-new teacher. So it was fun to watch her enthusiasm, and it's just amazing to me, especially when you can get junior high kids in particular to sing and participate. So I just celebrate all of those music band and orchestra teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. I knew Ms. Abbott-Bearity would talk all about the, she loves those concerts so much. So I appreciate her attending all of those. I was able to go to the Royal Palm Band and Orchestra concert last night where Ms. Walker is the director. And it's amazing, my son is in the seventh grade band, and it was hot cross buns. So great. But then the growth that those students make as eighth graders, they were playing like actual music that sounded like actual music. Not that hot cross buns didn't sound like actual music, but definitely the complexity built. So just, yeah, kudos to those teachers for the work that they do with those kids. I also just wanted to mention that this last weekend was National Board Certification Weekend. So I know we have teachers pursuing National Board Certification who saw their fireworks. And so congratulations to those teachers. There'll be more celebration of that later. But I know how exciting it is. The way that it works is that when you go to the National Board site on the night that scores are released, if you certified, there's just fireworks going off all over your screen. And so you just like push the button and hope that the fireworks show up. And when they do, it's just this huge relief and a big accomplishment. So congratulations to those teachers, and we look forward to celebrating with you in the next several weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Members. I was able to attend the Division II Championships of the Troyer-Charger Tournament, and it was such a good game. I'm really excited we get to celebrate Saguaro here tonight. Then I attended the Mountain Sky Junior High Regional Choir Festival, and it was so great. I just want to also thank the music teachers, Ms. Miller, Mr. Blinko, Mr. Berkland, and Mr. Mariscal, and of course, Ms. Coleman. And I also want to thank Principal Lee for bringing that event back to that region. And I also want to thank the Transportation Department for getting those students to practice the day of that event, as well as all the families and friends that showed up. It was a packed house. And then last week, I went to the EL Family Engagement Night at Washington Elementary, and the turnout was incredible. They served cocoa and cookies and had a story read to them. And then all the kids got a free book from Kids That Need to Read. So thank you to the EL Department and all the other district staff members that helped pull that all together and serve the food and make it such a great success. And finally, I was able to attend, or I was able to tour the Gifted Learning Center at Saguaro. And it's so cool to see the, how they've created a space, a schedule, and class rules to cater to the special needs of our gifted students, from alternative seating to scheduling unplugged time at the end of the day, and just allowing kids to move as they need. It's just a really cool option we have here in Washington and for our gifted students, and I'm so glad we have it. And then I just want to take a moment to recognize the service of Ms. Strahan, who served as a Governing Board Member from 1997 to 2004, and just to keep her family in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. That's all for me. Dr. Hightower?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Members of the Governing Board, thank you so much for continuing to support and advocate for all music programs, for all students, also for athletics, to have, for the students to have that holistic experience. I had the opportunity to attend probably, I don't know, six to eight concerts so far, and it has been incredible to see the talents of our students. They're multi-talented, so many different ways, but to see those in display with the great work of our teachers. So thank you for that today. It is my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the Mountain Sky Leadership Team, if we can have Ms. Melissa Polito come up. Ms. Melissa Polito, she will be serving as our interim Assistant Principal for the remainder of the '25-'26 school year. Ms. Polito received her Bachelor's in Elementary Education from Arizona State University and her Master's in Educational Leadership from Grand Canyon University. Go Lopes! Ms. Polito brings with her over a decade of experience in education spanning elementary and middle school levels. Throughout her 14-year career, she has served in a variety of roles, including general education in multiple grades, middle school math, science, English Language Arts, and math interventionist, and also she served for three years as Assistant Principal for Tonoliya Middle School in the Scottsdale Unified School District. By the way, she continues to teach a class at Mountain Sky right now, a math class for the students. She's also the proud mother of two children who currently attend Shadow Mountain High School, 15 and 16 years old. So she certainly understands the fast pace of both professional and family life. Outside of work, she enjoys traveling and going to music concerts. She brings with her not only a wealth of professional knowledge, but also a warm collaborative spirit and a deep commitment to serving the Mountain Sky community. Please join me in giving a warm welcome to Ms. Melissa Polito, Mountain Sky's new interim Assistant Principal. Would you like to say a few words, Ms. Polito?
Sure. All right. Governing Board President Clayton, Vice President Peterson, Board Members and District Leadership, I stand before you today with immense gratitude and excitement to formally accept the role as Interim Assistant Principal of Mountain Sky School. It has been my honor to serve the students, family, and staff of this district as the math instructional coach, reading instructional coach, and seventh-grade math teacher since August. In that time, I have developed a deep appreciation for the unique strengths and potential within our school community here at Mountain Sky. I want to thank the Board and the Superintendent for the confidence you have placed in me. I do not take this opportunity lightly. As the interim Assistant Principal, my focus is clear, to support my principal, Mrs. Lee, in maintaining a stable, positive, and productive learning environment, to foster collaboration among our dedicated staff, and most importantly, to ensure every student has the resources and support they need to succeed and thrive, and to prepare all our students to become responsible, successful contributors to our diverse society. I am committed to making this interim period one of a continued growth and stability, and I look forward to working closely with all of you in this new capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move to the recognition of Fall Athletic Championship Teams. Dr. Hightower?
I will defer to Ms. Lori Mora, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Clayton, Governing Board Members and community. Tonight, we are very excited to recognize our student athletes, and it's been a little while since we've done this. And so we're excited to have them come here. They work hard, their coaches work hard with them, they put a lot of time in there. Parents get them to the games and pick them up. And so it is quite the celebration to celebrate the talent that we have and just to really acknowledge all the work that they have put in. So we're going to go ahead and start with our Division II 5-6 grade sports. And I do want to mention, Washington Elementary School District is one of the few districts that has maintained a 5-6 athletic program competitive. And I do want to thank Perry Mason in the back. Mr. Mason is our athletic coordinator. Oh, he's not in the back anymore. He moved up. His neck up there. He put a lot of time and work into bringing some parents and community members together to talk about how we can continue to do that. And he really is a one-man show when that happens, and so we appreciate all the work that you put in there. So our Division II 5-6 grades' boys' basketball champions goes to Saguaro Elementary School. So what we're going to do is we'll read your names as you come on up here, and then we'll have you wait, and we'll take a picture together. And then Ms. Bustamante is also here with us, the principal, and so we'll invite her up as well. Okay? All right. So player number one, Adel Barcon. Zurai McCrane. Jesus Bustamante Lopez. Jaden Curtis. Lyra Flores Baraza. Angel Laris Ruiz. Antoine Donato. Dorian Garcia Gomez. Victor Basilio Sotelo. Juan Sotelo. Liam Weidinger. Jerry Vellant. Adrian Yubara. Harley Palmer. And Springs DeShawn. This is your Saguaro Division II champion boys' basketball team. I am so sorry. It looks like we may have missed Antonio Martinez. I'm so sorry about that. Glad you're here, too. And Jay Johnson. So sorry about that, gentlemen. Thank you. And Coach Steven Arrows, are you here?
No.
He's not here tonight. Okay. But we do want to recognize the coach, Mr. Steven Arrows.
And while they're grabbing pictures, Ms. Bustamante let us know that they added an additional coach to assist. This is quite, you know, a time commitment to coach, and so Ms. Gabby Maya, and I believe she's here, getting her picture taken with her team. So thank you, Gabby.
Okay. The next team we are recognizing tonight are Division I boys' 5-6 basketball champions from Acacia Elementary School. And Principal Christina Hollingsworth and Assistant Principal Mr. Phil Nichols are also in the audience, so they're going to come up at some point, too. All right. Player number one, Elias Mendez Garner. Justin Milan. Jayceon Brown. Vincent Estrada. Lamonte Chapman. Manuel Simora. Joseph Espinoza. Mackay Juarez. Nolan Segoe. Adrian Estrada. LaRan Whiters. Nathan Mejia Placencia. Daniel Rojo. Fabian Contreras. And Michael McDaniel. Big round of applause for the Acacia Elementary Division I champions. And the coach, Latifah Harris, is with us tonight, so let's recognize her as well. And there's a manager, and that is Brian. So Brian, you can wave, too.
All right. Here we go. All right. You guys shoot to the left, front row to the left, back row to the right. Keep going, buddy, all the way, all the way. Perfect. Keep going. All right. Now, make sure that the person behind you, okay, you guys, just a little more here, right this way. Come back. Perfect. Okay. Got to be able to see everybody. If you can't see me, I can't see you, Ms. Abbott-Bearity.
I see you.
Ready? All right. Here we go. Give me your best smile. Go Owls.
Go Owls.
Our parents want a picture. Best smiles from parents. All righty. Thank you, Acacia. Okay. Next, we are going to move to Middle School's seventh-grade girls' volleyball champions from Mountain Sky Junior High. Coach Brittany Odo is here. And when we get to Middle School, we get busy, so we may not have as many players here tonight, but we do want to recognize them, so appreciate the work. So we'll read their names, and I think we do have a few seventh-grade students here. Haley Leatherman. Peyton Smith. Haley Batton. Audrey Lattman. Chriselle Joseph. Allison Palietto. Charlotte Dial. Madison Lewis. Sadie Kinman. Julia Kefir. Taylor Gates. Ilania Hernandez. Juliana Chisholm. Ellis McClellan. Katie Sharet. And Mia Samiago. Samiago, so sorry. Thank you. Seventh-grade, Middle School, Mountain Sky Junior High team.
Okay. Ms. Lee and Ms. Polito, don't go too far because your eighth-grade team were also the eighth-grade girls' volleyball champions. Ms. Odo again. Unfortunately, they are not able to be here tonight, but we are going to read their names because they could watch this recording at another time, and we want to make sure they hear their name recognized. So Casey Carney, Ariana Flores, Molly Cuoco, Maya Hempie, Peyton Monk, Anaya McLendon, Azalia Graham, Melody Mohammed, Olivia Mulcluch, Ava Gorder, Willie Rounds, Delaney Duj, Lani Trujillo, Destiny Purvent, and Stella Bays. Congratulations, young ladies, for a wonderful season.
Thank you, everyone, and congratulations to all of these student athletes. We'll just take a moment to let people exit if they would like. And next, we'll move to public participation. Ms. Tucker?
No, we did not receive any requests for public participation.
All right. We will then move to the consent agenda. Do members have any items they'd like to poll? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, I will motion to recess our regular meeting for a public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, we'll move to our public hearing for the Expenditure Budget Revision Number One for fiscal year '25-'26. Dr. Hightower?
Mr. President, Members of the Governing Board, oh, just a second. So sorry about that. Let me get them. Thank you. Mr. President, Members of the Governing Board, every year during that December Governing Board meeting, if there have been any changes to the adopted budget, the Governing Board has to revise the budget. Due to current year funding and having a declining enrollment, Mr. O'Brien, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, will present a summary of this revision. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you very much, Dr. Hightower. Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Board. As Dr. Hightower mentioned, by Arizona revised statute, we have to revise the budget in December based off some parameters that the state audit general and Arizona Department of Ed have put together, and we met that criteria, so we will be...
And the coach, Latifah Harris, is with us tonight, so let's recognize her as well. And there's a manager, and that is Brian. So Brian, you can wave, too. All right, now, make sure that the person behind you, okay, you guys, just a little more here, right this way, come back. Perfect, okay. Got to be able to see everybody. If you can't see me, I can't see you. Miss Abbott may already...
I see you.
Ready? All right, here we go. Give me your best smile. Go Owls.
Go Owls.
Our parents want a picture. Best smiles from parents. Okay, next, we are going to move to Middle School's 7th Grade Girls Volleyball Champions from Mountain Sky Junior High. Coach Brittany Odo is here. And when we get to Middle School, we get busy, so we may not have as many players here tonight, but we do want to recognize them, so appreciate, appreciate the work. So, we'll read their names, and I think we do have a few 7th Grade students here. Haley Leatherman. Peyton Smith. Haley Baton. Audrey Latman. Chriselle Joseph. Allison Palietto. Charlotte Dial. Madison Lewis. Sadie Kinman. Julia Kefir. Taylor Gates. Ilania Hernandez. Juliana Chisholm. Ellis McClellan. Katie Sharet. And Mia Samiago, Samiago, so sorry. Thank you, 7th Grade Middle School Mountain Sky Junior High Team. Okay. Miss Lee and Miss Polito, don't go too far, because your 8th Grade team were also the 8th Grade Girls Volleyball Champions. Miss Odo again. Unfortunately, they are not able to be here tonight, but we are going to read their names, because they could watch this recording at another time, and we want to make sure they hear their name recognized. So, Casey Carney. Ariana Flores. Molly Cuoco. Maya Hempie. Peyton Monk. Anaya McClendon. Azalia Graham. Melody Mohammed. Olivia Molkic. Ava Gorder. Willie Rounds. Delaney Duj. Lillani Trujillo. Destiny Purvet. And Stella Bays. Congratulations, young ladies, for a wonderful season.
Thank you, everyone, and congratulations to all of these student athletes. We'll just take a moment to let people exit if they would like. And next, we'll move to public participation. Ms. Tucker?
No, we did not receive any requests for public participation.
All right. We will then move, move to the consent agenda. Do members have any items they'd like to poll? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Next, I will motion to recess our regular meeting for a public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, we'll move to our public hearing for the Expenditure Budget Revision Number One for Fiscal Year 25-26. Dr. Hightower?
Mr. President, members of the governing board, oh, just a second, so sorry about that. Let me get them. Thank you. Mr. President, members of the governing board, every year during that December governing board meeting, if there have been any changes to the adopted budget, the governing board has to revise the budget. Due to current year funding and having a declining enrollment, Mr. O'Brien, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, will present a summary of this revision. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you very much, Dr. Hightower. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. As Dr. Hightower mentioned, by Arizona revised statute, we have to revise the budget in December based off some parameters that the state audit general and Arizona Department of Ed have put together, and we met that criteria, so we will be revising the budget. You can see up here at the very top, there's some information. With the revision, the main revisions are going to be on our operation, MNO, operations budget, and then our capital budget. Grants don't usually get revised until January, so you'll see those in the, in the May revision. So we'll go through maintenance and operation. So you can see that we are down, we've talked about that several times, and also talked about that, that's going to change throughout the year. It could go back up, it could go down even a little bit more. As we go into the winter break and come to 100th Day in late January, we stop changing that number so drastically. We still change it, the state, because of current year funding, online schools and other items, does change it all the way through June. And you can see that due to this, that we're down approximately $3.4 million in our revenue control limit, which is really just what the formula states is our base, our base level. We do have the override authorization, there was no change there. Do want to note that the override authorization does not change throughout the year due to current year funding, only the per pupil ADM portion of the formula. So that is what that is, and that's mainly due to, once we set the tax rate, we can't change the tax rate during, during the fiscal year. And then we have desegregation at $5 million, that doesn't change. Washington Elementary School District has had desegregation for many years, and it's been at $5 million ever since I've been here, and even a little bit before that. It's not based on per pupil, it's based off of a vote that happened decades ago, so that doesn't change. We have finished our AFR, approved the AFR back in October, so we have updated the projections to the actuals. And you can see there that we actually just went up a little bit, and that's just due to some open POs that were out there, didn't spend or didn't get it on time and other items. So we went up there about, just over $600,000. Estimated allocation of Prop 123, this was a little bit of a change this year. The state also put in what's called our poverty weight, or free reduced lunch weight, put it in this line item instead of up in the base level, so we did increase that by that amount, which is the $1.3 million. So you can see that the overall general budget is only decreased at 1.4. But I do want to take a moment just to explain that a little bit as we go. The budget balance carry forward and the estimated funding for Prop 123 is not necessarily always ongoing money. So really, we need to take a look at the $3.4 million and down 771 ADM students, and just that is where we kind of start building the budget for the next year. We're not just down $1.4 million. The critical number in this is the $3.4 million. I just wanted to point that out to the board as we go through this. Okay, our second one is our change in our capital budget, also known as district additional assistance. This is not affected by current year funding, so it doesn't have as many changes. But we did, as I mentioned just a moment ago, when we were talking about the maintenance and operation budget, when we did our adopted budget and our proposed budget, we were using May ADM numbers, and state, the state Department of Ed does a final one in June, and so there was just some small changes that lowered that. But that will not change the rest of the year, because it's not affected by current year funding. We then, again, very similar to MNO, have a budget balance carry forward. That's, capital's a little bit easier to project than MNO, because usually by, by May, we pretty much know everything that we spent, and we know what's coming in, because the schools are closing and things like that. Now that we have the AFR done, we have had added interest earned, which is dollars that we earn on the money that's at Miracupa County. And so you can see there at the very bottom, our capital budget, or DAA, has increased by $323,000. I can take any questions.
Board members? Welcome, Mr. Adams. Did you have any questions? Hearing none. This is also a time for the public to ask any questions. It is a public hearing, so if there's any questions from the public, you may present. All right, hearing none. We will, I'll make a motion to recess the public hearing for our regular meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we'll move to Item Six, action discussion items, and we will move to, move to approve the expenditure budget revision for fiscal year 2025-2026.
I move that we approve the budget as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to a word of contract for RFP 25.017 for the Superintendent Search Agency. Dr. Hightower?
Mr. President, members of the governing board, I know that you, as a team, had a subcommittee of the governing board to select a superintendent search firm, so I'll defer back to you.
Sorry, it says Danny was going to present, so my apologies. Yes, I want to thank Mr. Adams and myself, along with Sweetwater Principal Susie Smith, participated in the search committee. So we went out with, for an RFP, a request for proposal. We, what does it say, 201? Vendors were notified, five proposals were received, procurement reviewed those, and the committee went over them. The rubric was based on cost, you, there's a total of 100 points possible, cost is considered at 36 points. The method of approach and timeline of the firm was 25 points, their experience and reliability was 15, key personnel was 15 points, and responsiveness. So we used this rubric to rate each of the responses of the five vendors, and that, the committee recommended McPherson and Johnson, as they provided a robust timeline and methodology for reading, meeting the district's needs, a comprehensive and detailed screening process for candidates, and a structured approach for making recommendations based on defined criteria and district priorities. And they've done a number, a large number of searches. So with that, do board members have any questions? Okay. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I just want to quickly thank procurement Tracy, Ms. Pruitt, for a fine job, and really appreciated her help. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Pruitt, for your hard work to complete this process, and of course, keeping us compliant with procurement law. I just wanted to make a note that we did choose, it was the second option, if you look at the tabulation, because of their robust plan, the amount of searches they've completed, their screening process, but also because they have a guarantee, a two-year guarantee, that if the superintendent chosen does not complete, does not stay in the position for two years, that they will complete another search for just what are actual expenses. So that was part of our reasoning for choosing McPherson and Jacobson LLC. I will make a motion, I know I have to be specific, I will make a motion to approve the RFP Number 25.017 for superintendent search to the vendor as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the award passes. Next, we'll move to Item C, the early entry kindergarten overview and second reading of Policy 5-102. Dr. Hightower?
Thank you, Mr. Clayton, members of the governing board. By statute, governing board members are able to accept kindergarten students for early entry. Per your request, Ms. Lori Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services, will share with you what our district has done in the past for early entry, and also suggested changes. Of course, as a board, you can add your suggestions and your recommendations to this proposal. So with that, Ms. Moore?
Good evening, President Clayton, governing board members. So I have provided you with a report that provides an overview of our current process, also includes some of our early entry programs that we, or early childhood programs that we have, preschool, and then a little bit of information about some current numbers that we've had. So, our current process is that we do screenings for early entry kindergarten in July, and this has been in place for many years. And the rationale for doing it in July is it gives the children plenty of time to develop and have those skills ready, those kindergarten readiness skills, and give us an idea that, you know, their readiness to be in kindergarten early. It was a comprehensive assessment that had been done, it looked at some fine motor skills, gross motor, we had quite a team that was involved with that process, and parents were asked to pay a $100 nonrefundable fee that was, covered the costs of those that were performing the evaluation, because we had kindergarten teachers, you know, people that were not on staff during the summer, and so it was covering their costs for staffing to complete that assessment, as well as the materials that went into that. If the child was not recommended, and they found those results out either that same day or that very next day, whether or not their child qualified, if they did not qualify, then they were offered some of the other options that we have in our preschools, such as Head Start if they qualify, our EC programs, which are fee-based but very reasonably priced compared to other daycare options and preschool options in the area. And then if they were qualified, then they were, they would go ahead and register and come on into kindergarten, and we would get them prepared. There was always a safety net, for lack of better words, for, you know, the first two to three weeks, the teachers would assess and evaluate and make sure that they were on track. If the students were not demonstrating that they were going to be successful, then they were given the option then to get into one of our preschool programs, so that we would, you know, continue that, and then start them again the next year for kindergarten. I provided some data over the last four years on the numbers, and you'll see the numbers that we screened versus the ones that qualified, and then, as well as the numbers of those that went on to a preschool program into our district, and then the search to serve. Sometimes when our parents do bring their children in for the early entry kindergarten screening, we find that there might be some other needs that we want to take a look at, so then they refer to our search to serve team, which then would look at other factors that they would, you know, might want to consider. This year, we did add a second review, and so when we were taking a look at possibility of increasing some opportunities for more kindergarten students who are demonstrating readiness to come in, we did a second review of those files, just to make sure that maybe, you know, there were a few that although our process was rigorous, were demonstrating enough skills to go on through, and so we did add an additional nine that originally had not been recommended, but, you know, like a second review, we felt that they would be appropriate. They have gone on to kindergarten, and they are doing well. And so they, they all continue to remain in kindergarten at this time. So a couple of the other opportunities, just a reminder, I know you're fully aware of these programs we have in our district, we do have the Head Start program, extremely proud of our Washington program, it's been very robust, we have, you know, several sites with that, we have great ratings with the city of Phoenix, and so we work very hard to get our students into those programs and get them fully, you know, fully enrolled, so that we're reaching as many families as possible. Families do need to qualify for this program, and so there's some eligibility criteria, and you can see I've included that there as well. And then our KidsSpace Early Childhood Programs, you've heard, you know, a lot of our reports over the years about how effective these programs are, they're, they're aligned with First Things First, they have high criteria in what they're providing in those classrooms. You'll see the fees are listed there, once again, very nominal compared to what other daycares in the area and preschool programs cost. But we do ask our parents to help pay for that, and then fund, fund the staffing and all the materials that go into that as well. And then I did provide some, just the highlights there, you know, like I said, they're, they use learning dynamics, creative curriculum, is a very enriched program, we have a strong emphasis on the family engagement piece of it, families being involved with that, really working on nurturing the whole child, getting them ready for kindergarten, and focusing on those skills that they will need to be successful. And then obviously, our special needs preschool, for those students that qualify and have an identified need or disability, we will get them into that special needs preschool and get their education started, and, and we, you know, have several of those in our boundaries as well, or in our schools to do that. So now, looking forward, and what we'd like to take into consideration, is the possibility of identifying some additional students that are showing and demonstrating kindergarten readiness. One thing that we have looked at is the screening tool that we've been using. As I mentioned, it was quite a rigorous process that we had them going through, and, and I think, you know, we were proud of the work that we were doing with that, but it was almost a little bit too much that we were doing. And so we've been looking at the screening tool that we would look at. We align it, our proposed, proposal includes aligning it to our My Teaching Strategies Gold, which is something that ADE has utilized for our kindergarten programs, and it really focuses on those kinder readiness skills, and so we feel that that would be a screening tool that would be effective and aligns with what we would be looking for in our kindergarten programs, anyway. We would do the screening process more frequently, so instead of waiting to July, we would like to go ahead and start some screenings as early as the end of January, and just start identifying students who might be demonstrating some readiness. We would waive the fee for our families, which we feel has been a bit of a barrier, and by able, being able to do that, we would utilize the Wednesday afternoon time, so that we could still have kindergarten teachers very much a part of the process. We feel that's very important, because, you know, they have the input of what a typical kindergarten student looks like, or what those skills are that they could go on to develop. So we would invite our kindergarten teachers to be a part of that, as well as some of our district staff. But by doing it on a Wednesday afternoon, you know, we wouldn't have to pay anything additional for that team, and so then that would allow us to waive that cost for our families, which we do believe would, you know, open up some more opportunities. If the student is approved, we would go ahead and get them registered right away, and then we would also encourage them to take, take advantage of summer jumpstart opportunities that we are looking to offer kindergarten students, once again, to get them ready. Some other pieces we've looked at and talked about is what can we do to help our parents to fully understand what they can do between now and the start of school, and so we have an amazing Washington Resource Center that does a lot of this work with our families, anyway. So on that day, when they would come in and have their children screened, we would then have the parents receiving some information about how they can now work with their children and have them ready for the upcoming school year. We would maintain that same safety net, that if they are demonstrating within the first couple of weeks of school, that they're not being successful, then we would get them into one of our early childhood programs, and keeping in mind that we'd like to leave some spaces available, so that that would be an option for those families that they could go back and do that. We also have recognized as a team that we see challenges with our kindergarten students who are age-appropriate and currently come in at the age in which they can register, and they don't always acclimate quite, quite as well as, you know, they should, they haven't been in school, they haven't had some of those opportunities, and so we would want to make sure that our kindergarten teachers have the resources that they need to not only be as effective as possible with all of our kindergarten students, but keeping in mind that some of our, our kids might be coming in a little, you know, less ready or less mature, and there might be some specific tools that we can give those teachers to help them be successful and create those classroom environments that will foster success. So we do feel, in looking at the, the numbers, and this is, you know, kind of the enrollment piece, the number of 8th graders leaving our district, we did provide that in the summary, versus the ones that are coming in, that is part of what is creating enrollment deficit. And so if there are ways that we can take a look at kindergarten students that could get in, and we can get those early childhood opportunities ready for them, moving forward, we feel that that would be an appropriate recommendation for our district, and something we'd like to take a look at. And we will take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, President Clayton. I do have, listen, I, I, I have a lot of feelings about this, as I expressed last meeting. I've, I have two sons who are summer babies, and one of them is a July baby, and he started school, he's incredibly gifted, very intelligent child, on track to be, you know, the top 1% of his high school class, all AP and honors as a junior in high school, great kid. The number of times that Principal Morris had to call me to tell me the ways in which this particular child had wreaked havoc in his classroom because of, I believe, a little bit of boredom, but also a lack...
piece, the number of eighth graders leaving our district, we did provide that in the summary versus the ones that are coming in, that is part of what is creating enrollment deficit. And so, if there are ways that we can take a look at kindergarten students that could get in, and we can get those early childhood opportunities ready for them moving forward, we feel that that would be an appropriate recommendation for our district and something we'd like to take a look at. And we will take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Ms. Peterson?
Thank you, President Clayton. I do have, listen, I, I, I have a lot of feelings about this, as I expressed last meeting. I have two sons who are summer babies. And one of them is a July baby, and he started school, he's incredibly gifted, very intelligent child, on track to be, you know, the top 1% of his high school class, all AP and honors as a junior in high school, great kid. The number of times that Principal Morris had to call me to tell me the ways in which this particular child had wreaked havoc in his classroom because of, I believe, a little bit of boredom, but also a lack of maturity, is quite high. It's more than all the other phone calls I've gotten from all the other four children combined, probably double the number. And my other son, who was born in the summer, we didn't let him start kindergarten because he would have been four starting kindergarten, and we held him. And he's in seventh grade now, and he's not, he doesn't have the natural intellectual gifted ability that his brother does, but he has a level of maturity and leadership that I think I can only credit with, to his age. He's just, because they act exactly like at home, but at school, they just sort of have fallen into different roles. So, that's anecdotally where I come from in this argument, in this conversation. And the reason that we didn't keep my older son back a year was because we literally could not afford it. That was it. It was like, we can't afford to pay daycare for two kids, and there's another one that needs daycare, so you're starting kindergarten even if we thought that it would be better to keep him back a year. And so, when I look at these numbers of parents who brought their children to us looking for an option, I see that the majority of those kids, except for this last year, which it looks like the second screening maybe, but the majority of those kids were sent to preschool, or some of them were sent to Search to Serve because they had needs even greater than, you know, what could be offered at a preschool, or different needs, right? So what I see is parents looking for an option, for support, for a place to send their kids to get help, you know, whether that is, like it was in our case, daycare is expensive, and we can't afford to send our two or three of our kids to daycare, and maybe starting kindergarten would help ease that financial burden. And so, when I look at this, these screening numbers, I think what these parents want is access to affordable care for their children, access for quality education for their children. And maybe they think the only option is accelerating them to kindergarten, but that they find out, no, we do have these preschool options. So, I guess I would love to see our effort put more into, and I know the effort is there, but put more into expanding our preschool programs and expanding access to those, and expanding parents' understanding that those resources exist, and how they can get in contact with them, and how they can get their kids into those services. You know, there are so many quality programs that exist. And so, I don't know, I just, I appreciate these numbers that you put together, but as I looked at them, I just thought so many of these parents just want, they want something for their kids, and they think kindergarten's the next option. Maybe we're not doing enough, a good enough job reaching out and helping them to understand that we do have, I mean, this is affordable preschool, but also Head Start, high-quality programs, great curriculum, and available to them. So, like I said, I have strong feelings, and I think I made them pretty clear, but I think this speaks so much to the fact that our community needs access to preschool.
Did you have something? Ms. Abbott-Biardi?
Thank you, President Clayton. I'm, I agree with Ms. Peterson with regard to, I would love to, I don't know how we educate the community on these options for them. I noticed specifically about the, was it the preschool where DES is accepted? Is it preschool?
Head Start.
Head Start. I mean, KidsSpace. I think that would be really important to educate the community on as well, because it's a sliding scale for DES. So you work with your case manager, and they help you, I learned this a year ago with some family person, that there's a sliding scale based on your income, even if you're above poverty level, and you're in the DES system, that, but parents don't know that, I think. So, I don't know how we will educate the community on these other options, which I think are wonderful as well. I'm really glad that we're going to not have a fee. I think that was prohibitive before. So, again, I echo what Ms. Peterson said. I want to be able to see, like, how we're going to reach out. Because I think if we offer these programs to the community, first of all, if you get the brand-new kindergarten student, then you bring the family in, you know, and hopefully they will stay and bring the other siblings along. But I agree with Ms. Peterson with regard to, families just want some option, and it's nice to know that you'll educate them that if kindergarten is not right for them, there are some options, even for people who, you know, Head Start with regard to under the poverty level, which is, I don't know how people can even afford to live, but then KidsSpace, and then there's the preschool option as well. So, thank you for presenting this information. And again, I just encourage our district to find ways to educate the community on these options. Yes?
If I may share, members of the governing board, we do have Head Start and preschool options, but they are so incredibly limited. As an educator, the dream would be to have about 2,000 preschool spots, and how many do we have, Ms. Mora?
I don't want to quote the number completely off, but it's about 350, huh?
It is incredibly limited to the need that we have in our district and in our state, and sadly, our state doesn't fund preschool. So, it is following a process that would support the families knowing, then, of course, knowing what the requirements of kindergarten are, and if that's an opportunity that they would want their kids to go through, but also providing them the data that, and they would also have to sign up, that if they know that their kids are not successful, even after an assessment and starting into jumpstart or kindergarten, that they might have to go into a limited preschool spot. I have experience with early entry kinder in my previous school system, and in the last four years, it became about 10% of the enrollment of that previous district. So, it's an opportunity. Another thing that some of our principals have stated to me is that they would much rather have the early entry and have, start working with the students sooner than later. They're like, we have such a huge need to have that ideal dream of having the 2,000 preschool spots, but we're not close to that. So I did want to share that information as well.
Ms. Peterson?
I was just going to ask, so, if the demand for preschool increased, then we would, it doesn't, they don't fund it, so we couldn't expand it? It's just, I mean, it doesn't pay for itself? I'm just wondering.
No. And Mr. O'Brien can speak more to it? It costs about $150,000 plus to run one preschool classroom. So, and we are not able to use maintenance and operations funding to fund preschool. And with the fees, I don't, I'm not sure about that question, so I don't know, Mr. O'Brien, if you have that, even with ECE, how are we able to afford that?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Hightower, Mr. President, Board members. ECE is definitely not a profitable endeavor for the district. It's not sinking the district either. It does somewhat get very close to breaking even. It used to be a little bit more robust, and unfortunately, the pandemic kind of slowed that down a little bit. So the past couple of years, we've been working with ASA and Ms. Mora to try to find out exactly where we can. But those programs have a lot of licensing restrictions, which is kind of what boosts up that price that Dr. Hightower spoke about. But it's not making money, but it's not bringing us down either.
And just to clarify, ECE is early childhood enrichment. Mr. Adams?
Thank you.
Did you have something, Ms. Mora? Sorry.
I'm sorry, President Clayton, Board members. I did want to add with Head Start too. Unfortunately, the city is also experiencing funding issues, and so we actually were reduced by several slots over these past two years. And so that also impacted the number of opportunities we were able to offer with Head Start programs.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Thank you. Are we, are we participating with First Things First? Are we going after any of the grants? Are we?
Yes, and I'm...
Have anybody that represents us at First Things First?
Dr. Bailey actually serves on the board, so she can speak to that, and how it gets funded, and how it has been reduced as well.
President Clayton, members of the board, Mr. Adams, having been on the board, Mr. Adams knows very well the opportunities that First Things First actually gives to us. Actually, ECE is basically funded through quality-first type of scholarships, for the most part, if a student qualifies for it. The funding in First Things First has gone down dramatically, basically because people are not smoking, okay? Which is good, okay? It's positive, okay?
Not for preschool.
Yeah, but not for First Things First. So, we are seeing drastic reductions in all of our types of programs for First Things First.
But we are going after some of those grants?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any...
I'm sorry, just one more thing. I guess my other concern is, we're saying, oh, we have so few spots, and then we're going to reserve some spots, so if kids aren't successful in kindergarten, then we'll be able to move them to one of those programs. So, just in theory, are we reserving a dozen spots? Are we reserving enough spots for every kid that moves in? Are there plans for what that would look like? Is it, you know, if the idea is that we're going to expand the number of students who are early entering kindergarten to as much as 10% in a dream world, I hate that idea of all those 17-year-olds graduating from high school. Sorry. Man, I always told, so I tell myself, is, I kept him one more year when he was a baby, so I could keep him one more year when he was a teenager. So, I may regret that. But, you know, if we're looking to expand that, then are we looking to increase the number of spots that we're holding open in case? And what does that look like?
President Clayton, governing board members, right now, we have not been filling every single one of our ECE programs. So, that would be kind of an ideal problem if we didn't have openings. But right now, I would say, you know, if we take a percentage, we would, we have programs that would be available, we would offer those to the families and do that. I don't know, Dr. Hightower can kind of speak in our other district. I think there, you know, it was a limited number that they held, but they did keep a few.
Yes. And so, if it was about, so let's say, if it was about 40 students, right? Because it was definitely a lot smaller school district. Typically, we might have two students that after assessments and after jumpstart and after starting the first couple of weeks. So it wasn't a big number of kids that weren't able to continue to stay in the program.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi.
Thank you, President Clayton. I think it's, one of the things I would really like to see, looking at the list of the ECE programs, is to put some more of those down in the southern part of the district. I think transportation is very limited for people who, even if they can afford a sliding scale. I am curious as to why there aren't more ECE programs in the southern part of our district? I don't know if anybody can answer that? Do what?
Would that be under this topic, or would we need to discuss that in a future agenda?
I'm just, no.
I think because the agenda is listed, and we're talking about our early entry, and we list where they are, we could have a general discussion about how those schools were identified and why they were placed there.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about. I don't know if anybody knows.
I'm probably going to look over at Dr. Bailey, because I've only been taking academic support programs for the last two years, so she might have the historical knowledge on that.
President Clayton, members of the board, Ms. Abbott-Biardi, we did look at, when we, there are seven sites right now for ECE, and we did look at where the population was that we thought that would actually be able to support those. There is an upfront cost for any ECE program, so that has to be funded. So it is something that we could look at, more in the southern part of the district, definitely needed. The program at Lookout Mountain actually has two classes. There is such a demand for the Lookout Mountain two classes that they actually have a raffle type of process. Because at one time, they were lining up at 4:00 AM in the morning to actually get a spot in Lookout Mountain. So, but we do need to look at other areas that really could utilize that, those types of support services. Because as anybody, you know, can tell you in education, we can see the difference from any student that has had preschool experience coming into our kindergarten. There's a major difference. So, I would like to say that we would eventually get to, like, the state next to us in New Mexico that has free preschool that they've started this year, really looking at that. But we're not at that point, needless to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi.
Just a follow-up. So, the preschool program is different than the ECE program?
Correct.
Our ECE program is our preschool program, but then we also have special needs preschool, and then the Head Start.
If I may, Ms. Abbott-Biardi, I think one of the biggest differences, in my understanding, is that in the ECE, Early Childhood Education Program, the way we have been staffing it is without certified teachers. So I think that's probably the biggest difference between the Head Start and the ECE.
Right. So I wonder, just to throw it out there, that if we were able to find maybe some community partners who could pay the upfront fee through donations and so forth, to be able to put ECE programs in the southern part of our district. I think that's really important when we're looking at student growth and proficiency, since we know that that really does help a lot. And so, it's just something I'm passionate about, if there's any way to do it. And then, again, that's because DES is accepted, and there's a sliding scale for that. So, families, once they get past the initial fee, can have a better chance of being able to afford that. So it's just something for the future that I think would be really, I would strongly encourage our district to look at ways to bring that to the southern part of our district.
So you're going to chair that committee?
Mr. Adams?
No, I'm just volunteering, Jenny to chair that committee to, there you go.
Ms. Peterson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say too, just for the public, that the number of Head Start programs we have on the website, it looks like, I don't want to misspeak, there's several of them, correct? Head Start? Yeah, we have like 14 or 15 different campuses with Head Start. Is that...
We have them listed, actually, in our document here.
See them listed in the document? I probably didn't read right.
We actually had, we used to have additional, it looked like we had more, but we were finding that our half-day programs were not successful, that families really wanted those full-day programs.
Yeah.
So we consolidated them down into full-day programs, so.
And so, just, I'm just sort of guessing here, but just looking at the neighborhoods in which the ECE programs in, and the Head Start, I do think that the ECE programs, like, if your neighborhood school, Lookout Mountain, couldn't support a Head Start, it didn't have enough people that qualified for Head Start to do that, but there was still a need for preschool, there was a need to be connected to the community there, and so then, you know, those ECE programs met that need. So, I want to just make sure that anyone listening would know that we have preschool programs, full-day preschool programs, at many of our schools in the southern part of the district, and some of them in the northern and, you know, east, all areas of the district, that are Head Start programs. But yes, the ECE programs are a little bit limited, and it would be awesome if we could expand those, just to give access to all the different opportunities for all the different families. But the important piece is, we know preschool is a really, really valuable way for our kids to get ahead and get the things that they need to get going into kindergarten.
Thank you all. I guess I'll just make a comment. So for preschool, we are looking at partnerships, so we've brought Stepping Stone, I think we approved it last meeting, so, and we will continue looking for those partnerships to help support our preschool learners. And I kind of view this, early entry kindergarten, as a way to support our parents. I may not, I may not meet the income eligibility requirements to be in Head Start. I can't quite pay for that $600 for the KidsSpace, because I need a full day. And I personally feel like then, you know, we're supporting that family by seeing if they, you know, with jumpstart in the summer, can have a successful time in kindergarten, and... And so that is the comment I will make on that from my perspective. But my son, I guess I will note, my son didn't go to kindergarten because it was COVID, so it was just me and him and me attempting to try to be the teacher that I am not. So I do lack a little bit of experience. But I will make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 5-102 enrollment requirements.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The motion passes. Next, we'll move to a request for future agenda, or future reports or agenda items, board members. Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the meeting adjourns at 7:23. Thank you.
Be holidays, everybody.